Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Memorial Hall. Before I start, I want to ask if everybody can hear clearly. There is a speaker down in that corner. If you can't hear very well on that side, you can move closer to the speaker. I am in the chair tonight. Because Mayor Wood is taking a well-deserved holiday. And I, as the deputy mayor for this phase of 2024, am replacing him as the acting mayor and chief executive officer in his absence. Part of that rule requires me to chair meetings like this and council meetings. So it being 7:01 PM on Tuesday, January the 6th, 2024, I now call this public hearing to order and acknowledge that we are on the traditional territory of the Stahelish. The Local Government Act requires councils to conduct public hearings before adopting or amending official community plans or zoning bylaws. This public hearing is being convened in order to hear public comments on the village of Harrison Hot Springs zoning amendment bylaw number 1193 from 2023. In accordance with the legislation, the time and place of the public hearing was advertised in the January 26th and February 2nd, 2024 additions of the Agassi Harrison Observer Newspaper. Information on the proposed bylaw has been available on the village website and at the village office. All persons who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw must be afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the bylaw that is the subject of this hearing. Therefore, any person attending who believes their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw may be heard on the matters contained in the bylaw. Please restrict your remarks to matters of direct consequence to the proposed bylaw. This hearing is not a forum in which elected officials debate among themselves or with the proponents or opponents. Council may ask questions for clarification of a speaker's point. After this public hearing has concluded, the council may, without further notice, give whatever effect they believe appropriate to the representations made at this hearing. The bylaw will be presented to council for further consideration at the next appropriate council meeting. The planning consultant will now introduce zoning bylaw number 1193 as read a second time at the regular council meeting of May 15th, 2023. Mr. Kossi, would you please read your report?
Thank you, your worship, for Mr. Chair. Village of Harrison Hot Springs bylaw number 1193, 2023, being a bylaw to amend the village of Harrison Hot Springs zoning bylaw number 1115, 2017. Whereas the mayor and council has deemed it advisable to amend the village of Harrison Hot Springs zoning bylaw number 1115, 2017, the zoning bylaw for the village of Harrison Hot Springs has adopted May 7th, 2018. Now therefore, an open meeting assembled to village and council of Harrison Hot Springs and acts as follows. The citation, this bylaw may be cited for all purposes as the village of Harrison Hot Springs zoning amendment bylaw number 1193, 2023. Under the text amendment section that under the C1 Zone Development Regulations for the Commercial Uses for the Floor Area Ratio, the following number is deleted in its entirety, 1.5, and the following number is inserted in its place, 1.5, superscript 8. Under the notes section, the following is inserted after the word use. Number 8 for land legally described as lot A, Section 13, Township 4, Range 29, west of the 6th Meridian, New Westminster District Plan EPP 108940, parcel identification number 031317367. The maximum allowable floor area ratio must not exceed 1.78. Under the C1 Zone Development Regulations for the Commercial Uses for the Lot Coverage Regulations, the following number is deleted in its entirety, 75, and the following number is inserted in its place, 75, superscript 9. Under the notes section, the following is inserted in its entirety for land, number 9 for land legally described as lot A, Section 13, Township 4, Range 29, west of the 6th Meridian, New Westminster District Plan EPP 108940, parcel identification number 031317367. The maximum allowable lot coverage must not exceed 76.9%, under the C1 Zone Development Regulations for the Commercial Uses for the Maximum Height Regulation, the following number is deleted in its entirety, number 15, and the following number is inserted in its place, 15, superscript 10. Under the notes section, the following is inserted in its entirety, number 10, for land legally described as lot A, Section 13, Township 4, Range 9, west of the 6th Meridian, New Westminster District Plan EPP 108940, PID 031317367. The maximum height must not exceed 22.8 meters. And that's the bylaw, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kossi. The developer or his representative is now invited to make a brief presentation regarding the zoning amendment bylaw. Who will present for the developer? Can somebody please turn his mic on? It's a very directional mic. You need to be right into the top.
Is that all right, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that introduction, Mr. Kossi. My name is Ryan Anderson. I own OTG Developments, which is located at 201-45269. Keith Wilson in the city of Chilowack. We are representing the owner and the developer. Thank you for this opportunity to do this brief presentation for you. So this is, as Mr. Kossi was saying, the development of 511 Lilawet Avenue and is a zoning amendment.
Mr. Anderson could ask you to speak closer to the mic and maybe a little slower, please? The echo in here makes it very confusing if you speed up. Thank you.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. Is that better?
Okay. The proposal is to amend the text of the Harrison Hot Springs zoning bylaw number 1115. Excuse me. Mr. Fassio, can you hear? Oh, Mr. Fassio thinks you're too close to the microphone.
All right. I'll back up a little bit. I'm doing my best here. All right, I'll try again here. The proposal is to amend the text of the Harrison Hot Springs. Is that good? Should I just continue like that? All right. The proposal is to amend the text of the Harrison Hot Springs zoning bylaw number 1115, 2017 to permit the following on a site-specific basis, an increase in permitted FAR from 1.75, including bonuses to 1.78. An increase in the maximum allowed building height from 15 meters to 22.8 meters. And an increase in the permitted lot coverage from 75% to 76.9%. Right? Okay. As is, I believe, known, there was an original application. We have made amendments to that original application. So I'd just like to go over some of the changes that were made since the original application. The original FAR proposed was 2.31. It is now 1.78. The original lot coverage proposed, 83.8%, is now 76.9%. Tree retention, six of the 33 existing trees were to be retained. Now we're proposing to retain 19 of the 33 existing trees. The parking originally had a major variance required. We are now compliant with the parking requirements. The dwelling units proposed originally was 180. We are now proposing 80. And the stories have gone from six stories proposed to a proposed five stories. And the public plaza amenity originally was not proposed and is now being proposed. The proposed development breakdown goes as follows. 84,180 square feet of residential space, again, 80 dwelling units being proposed. 4,061 square feet of indoor amenity space being proposed. 13,952 square feet of outdoor amenity space, inclusive of a rooftop lounge, a public plaza, and an outdoor courtyard. And 5,620 square feet of commercial space comprised of a 60-seat, 2,290-square-foot restaurant and a 3,330-square-foot personal service space. Touching a little bit more on tree retention. Trees located adjacent to Rendell Park have now been retained. A total of 19 of the 33 existing trees identified will be retained. And to offset the loss of the vegetation, the developer will work with the village staff and plant additional trees within the village. Traffic. A traffic and parking study dated July 27th, 2022 was completed by CTS traffic engineering specialists. The study was based on a higher density of the same use and thus the findings will still apply to this development. The report estimated that the site would generate approximately 48 peak hour trips. Intersection capacities were analyzed and it was determined that the added traffic from the proposed development would be negligible as performance and levels of service were maintained. Access and parking. Access to the proposed development will be via Lilawet Avenue to a two-story underground parcade. The parcade depth is limited by the high water table and recommendations from the geotechnical engineer. The development proposal exceeds the requirements for onsite parking outlined within the village zoning bylaw with 132 vehicle parking stalls and 26 bicycle parking stalls being provided. Additional existing street parking is also available. Lilawet Avenue is under the jurisdiction of the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, and an access permit has been issued and approved. Fire safety and design. All exterior cladding materials will be non-combustible. The building will be fully sprinkled, and each condominium suite will have a minimum of a one-hour fire separation between it and the adjacent suites and for the floors above and below it. The community benefits are as follows. Community amenity contribution of $30,000 to be used at the discretion of the village. Improvements to the public realm, including barbecue stands, bike rack, public benches, and public plaza. Upgrade to Rendell Park washrooms with a two-year warranty program. New sidewalks, curb, and storm drainage. Addition of a bus shelter and bench at Eagle Street Bus Stop and new public trees and landscaping improvements. Taxes and DCCs. The proposed development will create the following financial benefit through development cost charges and annual taxes. DCCs are estimated at $1,518,516. And taxation, based on the 2023 mill rates and the estimate of the value of construction, is estimated at approximately $1 million per year. Local connection. The developer and his family reside locally in the village of Harrison Hot Springs and are good community partners. A sales center to promote local real estate has been constructed using local contractors and will employ and cater to local businesses in the village. In summary of our rationale, the proposal is in keeping with the intended last use, land use as defined within the official community plan. The proposed design is consistent with village objectives and design guidelines and Schedule 1D of the official community plan. A range of street-fronting commercial businesses at ground level are proposed along with attractive streetscape aesthetics that contribute to the appearance of a high-quality lakeside resort community. The site design is in accordance with the view preservation strategy and will enhance lake shore viewing opportunities through the addition of outdoor public amenity spaces. This proposal contributes to growth through densification and supports the expansion of the local economy through available employment and shopping opportunities. The development will improve pedestrian connections to the lake shore area and other public amenities. Streetscape improvements and the addition of a public plaza encourage walking and social interaction within the village core. I would like to also add that we've brought a good group of people here to answer questions from mayor, council, staff, and the public as they come up, inclusive of myself as a planning consultant, two members of the architectural firm that have designed the building, and the civil engineer that is working with us as well. And also Jennifer Powers, who formerly worked for MOTI, is here to elaborate on any questions associated with the traffic study. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Don't go away.
Yep.
Before you leave the microphone, I'd like to ask if any member of council has a point that they would like to have clarified from that former presentation that we just heard. Consulor Vidal has a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you to our presenter. I know that you had indicated there would be a public plaza. Could you just elaborate on exactly where that will be? Will that be contained within the building or outside the building, just where, facing Rendell Park or facing Lilawet? Thank you.
Sure. It is outside the building. Is it possible to get staff to bring up the site plan again, please? I apologize. Through the chair. I apologize. The third slide, we believe, please. Back one, please. Yeah, so fronting onto Lilawet is basically at the front of the building. We don't have sight. Leon, did you bring up site plan?
Well, yes, it's going to be difficult for anybody on Zoom to know what it is you have presented, but if you're going to speak, you will need to do in the microphone so others can hear what you say. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to hand this, and then I think one of the slides actually does show it. The access slide. One moment, please.
So perhaps you can explain what it is you're laser pointing.
So that would be right on the corner of Spruce and Lilawet. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, and are you proposing any public amenities on that plaza? Benses or anything like that?
That's where the benches and the barbecue. Yeah, so through the chair, benches, barbecues, and landscaping.
All right, thank you.
Well, I got some of that explanation, but I would like a little clarification. Are you saying that underneath the pointy part where Spruce Street meets Lilawet Avenue, there will be a triangular public plaza there?
Yes.
And will that plaza be part of the strata property or will it be dedicated to the village as public property?
So Leon is from the architectural firm and it's private property but accessible to the public?
By some kind of a tenure for the village or a lease or a easement or right-of-way? What is the security for that?
We'd be fine with providing an access easement to the village.
Okay, thank you. And how big is that public plaza over there?
Roughly speaking. About 1,000 square feet? Through the chair, about 1,000 square feet. Certainly. Through the chair, about 1,000 square feet.
1,000 square feet.
Approximately, yes, sir.
Are there any other council members with a question for the presenter? Consul Jackson, Consul Fassio. Can I ask a question then on the on the local connection slide? You said that a sales center to promote local real estate has been constructed using local contractors. Whereabouts is that? Right across the street on Lilawet. Are you saying that you intend to produce that or that you have produced that?
It's made, it's been built, yeah.
It's built. It's there. It's beside the church.
Over, yeah. Sorry, across the street from here, sir, sorry.
Across the street from here?
All right, yeah.
Yes, I haven't noticed such a place. That's why I'm asking the question. You say here that you have done it, but it must be very low-profile because I haven't seen it. So.
How big is it approximately? Okay. It's the corner unit in the condo development across the street from this facility.
On the other side of Lilawet, behind this hall?
Yes.
Oh.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And can the public go there and get information?
Oh, okay, yeah, there's nothing open yet.
Okay. So it's not there yet. All right, thank you. Any other questions from council, the presenter? Thank you very much. You may sit, and we will move along with the agenda. The next item on the agenda is written submissions, and the village has received several of those, and I'm going to read those into the record. The first one is from Julie Chamberlain, which says to the village of Harrison Hot Springs, "We, Dave and Julie Chamberlain, completely object to the rezoning to allow for the potential monstrosity at 511 Lilawet Avenue. This is a village, not a city. The application exceeds the height limit by 26 feet, and it fits to the lot lines with one being against a taxpayer's park. The applicant did nothing to change the height of the building from the last refusal. I feel sorry for the residents living by and around it. This would be a terrible precedent at the waterfront. Also, we just about ran out of water last year. Something has to be done about that before any more units are built anywhere. Maybe have the applicant put in another water tower as right now we do not have the water to service their clients. Please verify that you have received this email by a return mail. Thank you sincerely, Dave and Julie Chamberlain." So noted. The second one is from Jan Perrin. Jan Perrin says, "I have attached my comments on the zoning amendment bylaw number 1193. I am not able to attend the public hearing on February 6th, 2023. Please include my comments in the public record. Thank you." Jan Perrin's comments are as follows. To whom it may concern, this is the third time that the village of Harrison Hot Springs has asked for public comments on this development at 511 Lilawet Avenue. Little changes each time it is trotted out. I am still opposed to it as I was in May 2021 and October 2021. I am weary of the changes. Floor area ratio upped instead of down this time. Height of the building upped instead of decreased. This is not the city. We do not need six-story buildings covering 76.9% of the lot. I already opposed 83% the first proposal and 75% the second variance. I am now, as previously, still opposed to a 22.8-meter building that will tower over a public park. I am also opposed to the floor ratio of 1.78, which is the ratio expected in high-density urban areas, not in a small resort community. I already oppose the 22.8-meter height and the 1.75 floor area ratio in May 2021. Why are they proposed again? It frustrates me that in October 2021 amendment, the developer boasts of saving 19 trees of the 33 trees instead of six, like the original proposal, when all except one of the trees retained on the plan are, one, within the boundaries of Rendell Park, a public park that should never have the tree touched. Two, mostly young trees, not the important mature Douglas pears that stand along Spruce Street and along Lilawet. These big trees are so important to the ecological health of our village. See my letter dated on trees dated July 5th, 2021, and attached my October 2021 email response to zoning amendment bylaw number 1168, 2021. I am also concerned that a protected species, the Pacific chorus frogs colony, was destroyed by the developer even after I alerted the mayor and council of the existence of the breeding frogs. See letter dated July 5th, 2021 below, and my zoning amendment bylaw number 1168 comments on October 5th, 2021. I am opposed to this development. In the 21st century, with a climate catastrophe upon us, it behooves this village to approve only developments that retain our mature trees, follow climate-friendly stewardship practice, and that retain the small resort community atmosphere of our village. Respectfully, Jan Perrin, Harrison Hot Springs." And if the public wishes to read Jan Perrin's previous submissions, they will be available for you from the village office or perhaps after this meeting today. And there are about six pages of those.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to identify that all of those are actually on our website as well.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
The submissions, all of the submissions up to date are on our website as well.
Oh, thank you. The CEO has pointed out that these submissions are available for viewing on the village website. The next letter I have is from Barbara Dreamer, which says, "Mayor Wood and council, I am opposed to having a large commercial residential property built on this site. Rendell Park was intended to be a public space to be enjoyed by residents and visitors. Having the park overshadowed by a large edifice is contrary to this intent. The building will disrupt trees, plant life, soil, aquatic and shoreline health, and animal-human lives. I am a longtime village resident who owns property along Rendell Beach. I value the natural beauty of this area and see no value in constructing yet another huge monstrosity within Harrison Hot Springs. Thank you, Barbara Dreamer." The next letter is from Paul Ruda. Good morning. Good morning. We live at Lilowet Avenue, right next door to this development. We are unable to attend the meeting tonight. But would like to inform you that we are concerned and opposed to the proposed changes. The floor area ratio from one point five. To one point seven eight. The lot coverage from seventy five percent to seventy six point nine. As well as the building height going from fifteen meters to twenty two point eight meters. All of these things will tower over us. And shadow us out. For every foot the proposal adds to the height. The less sunshine we will get. We trust that our concerns will be heard and addressed. If you have any questions, please let us know, thank you, John and Paul Wuda. I have a letter from Wolfgang Thornton. Which says, I am opposed to these variances and the whole structure for the following reasons. This will result in inappropriate development of this site. It will adversely affect the natural environment and surrounding area. Substantially affect the uses and densities of the area. Very permitted uses and densities of the surrounding area. Defeat existing by law uses. It's outside the use of the community plan. Unsafe for the public in its densification. The lack of parking, space for deliveries and sight views for vehicles. The next letter comes from Samantha. Um, Lewis. From the Ministry of Transportation. And Infrastructure, I believe it's called. Uh Ministry of, yeah, N O T I. Good afternoon. The Chilliwack Area Office has received your letter dated May sixteenth. Regarding the development taking place at five eleven Lilowet Avenue. Seeking comments regarding the access. And information regarding any other approvals the Ministry of Transportation. And infrastructure may require. As Lilowet Avenue is not within eight hundred meters. Of an intersection with a controlled access highway. There is no requirement for the ministry to endorse the bylaw. As mentioned in your letter. If the building is looking to take access off of Lilowet Avenue. Then an access permit is required. Please have the developer landowner apply to myself. For a permit withdrawing to the proposed access and I'll begin my review. I've attached our permit application. My next letter comes from the Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department. Subject proposed zoning amendment application for Lot A. Section thirteen, et cetera, five eleven Lilowet Avenue Harrison. And this is comes from. Chief Janest. I am writing in response to your letter requesting advisement. Of the impact of the proposed zoning amendment application for five eleven Lilowet Avenue. On the fire department's emergency response. As per your request. I have provided below an outline of some of the operational implications. In order to assist with the formulation of a plan. To meet the fire suppression needs for mid rise buildings. As an interior operation trained hall. These are the recommendations I have outlined with explanatory notes for each. Number one. The designation of the fire department should be changed. From an exterior operation trained hall. To an interior operation trained hall. Harrison Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department. Was originally designed or designated. An exterior operations trained fire hall under the playbook. Which was introduced by the Office of the Fire Commissioner. In May of twenty fifteen. Since that time. The requirements for each designation has changed. The minimum training standard MTS now identify. The distinctions between what the fire suppression tactics can be engaged in. By interior operations firefighters versus those which can be conducted. By exterior operations firefighters. According to the minimum training standards. Exterior operations level firefighters are not trained. To perform any fire suppression activities within a structure. Interior operation level structure firefighters may engage in fire suppression activities. Within simple structures. As described in the B C Building Code. Part nine. Buildings of three stories or less. With the maximum of six hundred square meters of living space. Or objects such as vehicles, single family dwellings or other small structures. Interior operations may also operate inside larger. Or more complex structures being multi-story, high rises, commercial complexes, et cetera. That the A H J has allowed to be developed and constructed. Where the fire department has pre-planned the structure. And determined it's safe. For internal operations. By appropriately qualified firefighters. Firefighters must be trained specifically. To the risks associated with each large or complex structure. While our department currently trains to interior level standards. The designation change from exterior operation level. To interior operation level. Needs to be made before the deadline of March twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Secondly. Change the mutual aid agreement. With the Agassi Fire Department. To an automatic aid agreement for structural fires. Changing the current mutual aid agreement to an automatic aid agreement for structural fires. Increases the department's capacity. In order to ensure a sufficient number of members are available. For fire suppression efforts. For structural fires. The concern with this recommendation. Is the Agassi Fire Department may not have. The sufficient number of members to attend to a structural fire. While the Agassi Fire Department is designated. As an interior operations trained hall. The Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department. Is designated as an exterior operations trained hall. That being said. With the Agassi Fire Department is unable to provide. A sufficient number of members. The appropriate fire suppression will not be conducted. In closing. The realities of the community in terms of infrastructure. Demographics. Official community plan. Building inventory, risk, travel distance. Fire hall location, equipment. And staffing models, capacity. Makes the change to an interior designation realistic. Additionally, I recognize the village will need to examine. The Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department budget. Which will need a significant increase. I have summarized some of the issues we discussed. And identified some ways these can begin to be addressed. Please let me know if there are any further questions or concerns. Regard Curtis Janest, Fire Chief. A second letter from Mr. Janest says the following. I am writing in response to your letter requesting advisement of the impact of the proposed zoning amendment application. For five eleven Lilowet Avenue. On the fire department's emergency response. As per your request. I provided below an outline of some of the operational implications. In order to assist with the formulation of a plan to meet the fire suppression needs for mid rise buildings. As an interior operations trained hall. These are the recommendations I have outlined with explanatory notes for each. The Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department training. Should coincide with the appropriate interior operations training required. By the Office of the Fire Commissioner. As an interior operationally trained fire department. The Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department continues to train its members. Following the department's operational guidelines written and enforced by the local department. Which describe the advanced training and procedures that allow for a safe fire attack. Within permitted structures and objects. By following these guidelines. The Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department must conduct. Advanced training offered by the Justice Institute of B C. Or an equivalent training organization. Training courses such as Live Fire one, Live Fire two. Rapid Intervention Team. And all incident commander, team leader, safety officer courses. The Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department. Has trained its members to a higher level. Than its current designation. That being said. The Office of the Fire Commissioner recognizes that the Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department has members. With interior operations training prior to the changeover to the M T S. Number two. Change the mutual aid agreement with the Agassi Fire Department to an automatic aid agreement for structural fires. Changing the current mutual aid agreement to an automatic aid agreement for structural fires. Increases the department's capacity in order to ensure a sufficient number of. Members available for fire suppression efforts with structural fires. Considering the Agassi Fire Department. And the Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department. Are both interior operationally, operations trained. Both departments can adequately conduct a thorough spar suppression on a structure fire. Number three. Request pre-planned interior structure plans. For risk association with. Regards to structure of three stories or larger. Interior operation level structure firefighters may engage in fire suppression activities. Within simple structures. As described in B C Building Code part nine, being buildings of three stories or less. With a maximum of six hundred square meters of living space. Or objects such as vehicles, single family dwellings or other small structures. Interior operations may also operate inside larger or more complex structures. Being multi-story, high rises, commercial complexes, et cetera. That the Agassi, the A H J. Has allowed to be developed and constructed. Where the fire department has pre-planned the structure. And determined it's safe for internal operations. By appropriately qualified firefighters. Firefighters must be trained specifically to the risk. Risks associated with each large or complex structure. In closing. The realities of the community term in terms of infrastructure. Demographics, official community plan. Building inventory, risks, travel distances. Fire hall location, equipment and staffing models. Makes the decision to implement these suggestions realistic. Additionally, I recognize the village will need to examine. The Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department budget. Likely requiring a significant increase. I have summarized some of these issues we discussed. And identified some ways these can begin to be addressed. Please let me let me know if there are any further questions or concerns. Regards Curtis Janest, Fire Chief. That brings me to the end of the written submissions. Now I would like to invite the public to speak and to present their comments. In the interest of hearing all persons within a reasonable timeframe. Each person shall be. Allowed to have five minutes and further opportunity will be afforded for persons to speak a second or third time. Once all persons have had an opportunity to speak. The chair has the authority to stop any speaker. Who is not commenting on facts pertinent to this bylaw. Members of the public who are attending in person who wish to speak. Please state your name and address. And proceed with your comments. I now invite anybody who wishes to speak to council on this bylaw. Uh to come to the microphone and uh. Share your thoughts with us.
Teresa Amelus, six four one Skinner Place, Harrison Hot Springs. Couple of comments and questions. In regards to the public plaza. And the offering of barbecues. Aren't they going to be a little bit too close to the building for fire safety?
So um. Uh. I'm not sure that it's appropriate that you address questions to the presenter.
Oh, okay.
Uh it's appropriate that you address your comments or concerns to the council.
Okay, I'm.
So if you have a concern about an issue, state the concern.
Barbecue safety and the closeness to the building exterior. My next concern is in regards to the. Combustibility of the exterior, is it going to be hardy boy, hardy? Hardy board siding, is it going to be concrete? Those are two questions.
Uh, we cannot answer your question. What we can do is we can take your concern and convey that question to the developer.
Okay. I appreciate the time that the developers have put into making their changes, I've been following this development. Uh since it started. And the more time goes along and the more that I drive by Harrison, I drove by this site today. I'm going to be opposed to this development. I like the looks of the structure, but looks isn't going to cut it. Uh. Harrison is becoming a center of. The have and the have nots. And I'm getting a little bit tired of million dollar condos coming into Harrison. And multi uh. Multi-story developments that are impacting on the general congestion, way of life. Safety concerns. And all the rest of it. I'm not opposed to reasoned development. But I think my priorities in this village, having lived here four years. Are the water system, the water supply. The firefighting issues. The forest fire management and the risks therein. And the fact that we're going to have to increase our forest fire. Fighting budget when we can't even afford to train our local firefighters to be able to fight this few, this. Proposed development at five eleven Lilowet. In other words. We're going to be spending to train firefighters. To protect. This, I'm going to say. Pretty building. But they currently don't have the training to protect us from forest fire, that's a greater risk. So, thank you.
Thank you for your your concerns, they will be noted and discussed by council. Is there somebody else who would like to speak before I invite the Zoom attendees to chime in? Yes ma'am, please come forward. Uh, could you please bring the microphone down a little bit and step up to it? And press the button. There's a. To get a red light, you're on. Okay, thank you.
Kristy Sanford, five three three Lilowet Avenue.
Thank you.
Is this good now?
Sorry, you mean during for the.
Five three three Lilowet Avenue.
Uh Christine.
Kristy Sandford.
Sandford, thank you.
Um. Originally, I wasn't opposed to the development per se. But I do feel that. The requested. Um, height increase. And expansion of footprint. Um, is. Something that really has to be justified and I raised this at the last meeting. That if you're going to. Allow. Exceptions to bylaws, then there has to be. Reasons for that that are really significant. To the local community. That this really is a um, a benefit where you're trading off and you're giving. Extra height and extra footprint. For some really good, strong reasons. And I expressed this at the last meeting and.
And I expressed this at the last meeting and I do acknowledge that. Many of the current concerns that were raised have, um. There have been attempts by the developer to address those, but I feel that having I looked quite thoroughly at. The proposal, this most recent one, and it looks to me as if really these are just lip service attempts. To make to to make it look like the community concerns are being addressed, but they are actually not being addressed. Um, one of the, I mean, specifically for our, um. Our place, which is just a couple of lots beside the proposed, the five eleven, we're at five three three, we're a couple of lots down. We are worried about, um, about view and sunlight blocking and so forth and 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 not creeping up on our property. But at the same time, um, I think that from the community perspective, it's a it's a much larger problem. Um. I feel like the concessions have not been made, so I feel like it's really on the developer. To justify why the extra footprint and height should be there as opposed to the community members saying, why not? Um, uh. When I look at the environmental concessions that were supposedly made. The trees that I'm trying to figure out, you've got thirty-three trees. And they're giving nineteen back. How many of those came from Mendel Park, right? That were originally not even within their. Their boundaries to take away in the first place. I don't know that because I haven't actually, I can't see a map that tells me. I know that I've driven along the east side, which apparently all of those Douglas tree trees, those monsters. That are all long spruce there, those are going. According to the proposal, as far as I can see. So I'm not seeing that the ecosystem is being helped. I'm not seeing that the um, the shade requirements that are needed by the community. The carbon footprint is being taken away. So I'm I'm suggesting that the way that these community concerns were addressed are just lip service. And in terms of the, you know, another reason why you might justify. Um, and having an increased height of footprint would be high density, but for for the reasons that the province of B C and and. The federal government, for that matter, has has. It has expressed insofar as we do not have housing for residents. The locals don't have housing for residents. This property was not marketing, being marketed to residents, it's being marketed to investors. For short-term rentals, which have now been outlawed by, um. Um, by the like Airbnb, for example, there are very strong restrictions about what you can do with that anyway. So. I feel like the target of this developer is not to actually address the um. The concerns of the community, but rather just to make a profit and make it seem like they're. Addressing the concerns of the community. So the environmental concerns are not addressed. We don't really, the little public plaza and ten thousand dollars for art. Nice, but it's a gesture that's not significant or substantive enough to justify these changes. And so it's not the development itself. And finally, like the O C, the um, the the community, the village community development plant, there's this been. Argument that, you know, the developer should have these uh, on the outside towards the mountain, their mountain should have higher. Higher height restrictions because of this idea that on either side of the town, you get the high. Height restrictions and they come down like this in a slope into the center, as I understand that. And that may make sense if it was actually a cohesive, well-formed plan, but I don't see that happening. What I see right now in this development. Was a great big structure. At the end of the block on Spruce and Lilwet. In the meantime, you've got another property, John, who just built. Um, a a beautiful three-story structure, brand new, and so now you've got this big. Structure here that is being proposed to be built, and then the small structure here, you've got our place that is small. But even if we develop, we would probably develop like John's height, which is within the bylaws. And then what do we have at the end? We've got a big condo development, or it's quite old, but it's not high. So if someone was proposing something that was going down like this and and like this, then that it might fit in with some sort of cohesive. Plan, but the way it's been unfolding, because I think things have not worked out. I don't know what what was in mind in terms of the big picture here, but this smaller piecemeal approach to how this is being developed. Just seems to be something that strikes me, but the council and and the village of Harrison is going, okay, I say, what the heck were we doing? When we, when we do this, it just doesn't seem to fit with anything. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, somebody else like to have a comment on this proposal? Uh, I will have to prepare a speaker's list.
Thank you.
You're next. Thank you. Your name, please, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. I come to the microphone. Moon Al and Garno.
Thank you.
I'm six four one Schooner, I'm a member of the Advisory Planning Commission. In that light, I am, I'm asking through you, Chairman. To comment only on one item. That has come up in the written proposals, the comments here. And I don't think was clear.
Can I just stop you for a second to get a little advice? Uh, as chairman. Um, I wanted to ask a question of staff. Uh, has this project? Been referred to the Advisory Planning Commission by council? And is it currently planned to be referred to the Advisory Planning Commission? Or is the referral to the Advisory Planning Commission over and done with? I'm asking the question because I need to make a determination. Whether Mr. Garno, as a member of the A P C, uh, may be disqualifying himself. From attendance at an A P C meeting, if this is going to the A P C, or if it might go to the A P C. I need some guidance on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The. The council, an earlier council meeting, the council authorized it to be referred to the Advisory Planning Commission. To the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure and to the Harrison Hot Springs Fire Department. And we've done that. All the information that has been received is in the. Package at the back, the public binder. And as well, there's also the council asked that the applicant hold a public notification meeting. And those minutes are also in the binder at the back.
Well, that doesn't quite answer my question. So, uh, the council has referred this to the A P C, I think is what you're telling me? And has has it gone to the A P C and been discussed there?
Yes, your word, or yes, Mr. Chairman, as I said.
I'm talking about the current bylaw, not the previous one. As a current bylaw.
Bylaw has gone, the developers even made a presentation to the A P C.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh.
I, please understand, I could save you a lot of time right now. I'm not here to offer an opinion. I'm not here to make a comment of plus or minus or anything else. I seek clarification because in that meeting in October. The developers made a proposal, this proposal in front of the A P C, and yes. That has gone forward and and it's done its job. What I want to point out, because so many people have raised the point of height. The one thing I do recall from that meeting. Is the significant actual drop in height because of the. The floor, and I I just asked through you, Chairman, that you might seek clarification. Since the height is determined from the tallest point of the structure. But the top floor of the good chunk of the top floor does not reach that height. It was a significant factor. That I determined, and I didn't think that that was coming through clearly tonight. People are imagining this. Structure, so it's just to seek clarification. Again, I offer no. Opinion, plus or minus, I have that role. And I. Tried to avoid that. I'm just asking if if the council could. Seek clarification or understand the 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 actual height and how it's determined. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Garno. Uh, your comments will be noted and the council will have an opportunity to explore the issue of height. Uh, further, uh, when we close this public hearing and go back to further deliberations on the bylaw. Gentleman here who was waited. Please, uh. You have to push a little button to get a red light. There we go. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Council, my name is Randy Regir. I reside part of the year on lot one sixty-seven Cascade Bay. I am in favor of this project. I think it's a fantastic feature for the waterfront of Harrison. I have, uh, I use the boat launch access considerably throughout the year. And I look forward to being able to grab a coffee or an ice cream cone from one of the commercial buildings at that location. While I'm waiting for my turn at the boat launch.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Regir.
I would also like to point out that recently the province has enacted guidelines for density. That any building within four hundred meters of a bus. Of, for example, the village of Harrison or six hundred meters, there are uh, guidelines of ten stories. Or at least six. And the province is quite clear that those guidelines will be enacted. I don't believe that Harrison is exempt from that, and I think that the current proposal. Is a fantastic opportunity to proceed with creating housing that is much needed in Harrison. With a great aesthetic look and. Not stretching to the point where these guidelines would allow it to be if the developer chose to apply at the provincial level.
Thank you, Mr. Regir. Uh, myself and I believe some other counselors will be attending. A seminar on that issue in Vancouver, I believe, next week to find out just what the province is going to say about. Density and how it applies to us if it does. Yes, ma'am, the microphone is yours. Please pull it down to your level. There we go. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Thornton, and I live at three three six Chestnut Avenue. I am. Not really happy because a lot of. The people that wanted to respond couldn't get on the website to do it, me being one of them. So I'm here tonight to say I oppose it. Don't worry, but a lot of us have, and a lot of us are seniors. We have no fire smart program. There wasn't enough water last year. What makes the developers think that we have enough water now? Because nothing's been done. There is too many things wrong with this. The building is too high. It does not look aesthetically nice. We do not need any more townhouses and restaurants. When you ask tourists. What they think of Harrison, all they say is it's nothing but restaurants and townhouses and nothing for the tourists. Which is true because I've asked a lot of people that I meet. And I think this would be wrong to put this in place. It just takes away from the beauty. Of our village. We are a village. We're not New York. If they want the big buildings, go to New York, but leave our village alone. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else from the audience who would like to speak? Um, before I go to the Zoom. On the top, there you go. Thank you.
Wolf Gang Thornton, three three six Chestnut, there's three through six Chestnut Avenue, Harrison Hot Springs. I am, uh. Absolutely opposed to this project as it is. Being built in an area, a village. And by village, a definition is a small area with small houses and and small infrastructure. Um, the problem is. Not that it's a big bill. Well, it is a big problem, but. What we need on Harrison is to have our infrastructure upgraded. We need more water. We need better sewers. And we need smaller buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, ma'am, in the robe jacket. Corey.
Hello. Um, Corey Carlson, five four two Echo Avenue. I'm also here representing my brother, Steve Chenasic, and he is at, um. Sorry. Five five zero Lilwet and also five four four Lilwet. And we're opposed to the development on the basis of the heights. Excuse me, and the size of the building. I think that the building looks nice. It would have been nicer if it was two buildings. So that there is a breezeway or walkway, not just one big solid, what everyone's calling a monstrosity. And also the sunshine factor here in town. You know, we're two mountains and the lake. I get the the sunshine in the morning at nine thirty. I'm lucky when it's over on the west, I get it late. But Mr. Ruda, yes, it would affect him and maybe some of the others too. And I'm worried if this is approved, then where does it stop? Do we continue on with building bigger and higher and? Um. And actually with them building close to the property line with Mr. Ruda, he will be in the shade. Just when it comes up from the east in a certain point, he's going to be in the shade. So how will that affect other developments? So for those reasons, we're opposed and actually I could say. These units will go probably for non-residential people that it's weekend, summer homes. I saw that during the, uh, during COVID when we were shut down and locked down. Here in the village and I walked around the lagoon. I looked at all the condos. And about a quarter of all those condos had lights on, so it tells me that that's not permanent residence. And that's probably what will happen here too. And now. So providing jobs for people in town, no, that won't happen. Because they won't have places to live. So we're opposed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Uh, next comment?
Hello, my name is Kelly Easton, three two zero Miami Motor Drive. I just have a quick question regarding what the developer said that they're trying to provide more homes for the community. Kind of contrary to the last comment that thinks it may be short-term residences, but what if it's not and it's families that move in? We've discussed that we have water issues, fire issues, but there's more. Where will the kids go to school? Both Harrison and Kent districts are full. I would just like to know.
Thank you. Um, we can't ask that question, but the council can take your concern under advisement and explore it further following this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and for all of those reasons, I'm opposed to this development.
Thank you for the clarification. Um, if there's nobody else in the audience who wishes to speak to the microphone, I'm going to ask. If there's anybody on our Zoom link who would like to make a comment on the proposed bylaw. Can you please check, uh? Tyler, if there's anybody raising their hand on Zoom?
Yep, uh, if there's anybody on Zoom, uh, who wants to comment, just raise your hand. Looks like there are no questions.
I believe I've been told that there aren't any comments on Zoom. So for the third time, if there's anything. Else attending in person who would like to provide a comment or a submission. Please do so now. Uh. Would you like to make a second comment, Christine? Well, you are permitted to do that. I'm not sure if you are, though. Uh, I don't, this is not supposed to be getting into a debate. You're. Quite welcome to talk to people after the hearing.
Let's clarify issues.
Well, let's, let's hear from Christine. Uh, push the button, get the red light. And then talk.
Um, there's just one other thing that I noticed on the proposal, which was a bit concerning. It's sort of a double-edged sword, but. It, they were suggesting that this, um. That this zoning, um, exception be made just that would be very, it would be site-specific. In other words, anyone else in the neighboring area would be unable. To take advantage of those. to take advantage of those exceptions. I mean, and you know, it's a double-edged sword, but if you, if you are ultimately going to give this to a single site, it feels like you're then disadvantaging neighbors who are, whose property values won't go sky-high because of the new density allowances that are being given, you know? So I have an issue with that. I haven't thought it all the way through, but it just seems like that might not be such a good idea for the neighbors.
Just for clarification, are you then saying that you object to the variances and you'd prefer that the bylaw itself be enforced equally?
I object to the variances in the first place. I don't think they should be granted. In the second place, if they are granted, I feel that granting it just site-specific might be, would be a disadvantage to neighboring properties.
So, so just for clarification, your objection is that it's unfair advantage to give somebody variances and not to change the bylaw for everybody at the same time. Is that what you're saying?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Point taken. Your name again, please, for the
Teresa Homelis, 641 Schooner Place. I have a question through the chair to the fire chief, Mr. Janest. I'd like to know a specific estimate of his training budget that he would anticipate the firefighters would need to change to the interior designation for Harrison Hot Springs. And I'd like to recommend in any event, whether this development goes through or not, that that training be made mandatory for all Harrison Hot Springs firefighters. I think we're already past the point where we need it in this community. And I think it can only be an asset. I am 100% pro firefighter. I am 100% safety in this regard and I think that is my biggest concern. So I think I'd be more likely to be swayed towards another development like this if we already had those trainings in place, but we don't. And again, I stress water, safety, infrastructure first. Thank you.
Thank you. I can tell you that I'm trying to schedule a committee of the whole meeting for next week. And at that time, our Director of Finance will be presenting us with a proposed 2024 budget. And I expect the fire department's input to be part of that process. And as Mr. Janess has warned us in his letter, we probably need to increase his training budget quite significantly. Not as a direct result of this project, but because this has brought it to a head and brought it to his attention, we're going to have to get on with doing it and spend quite a bit more, I imagine, on on fire department training and possibly on bigger and better equipment in the future as Chilliwack has had to do to handle higher buildings. Thank you. Sir, would you like to come to the microphone and push the button and get the red light? Your name?
Mike Nelson, 350 Chestnut. I'm just curious, we've got a brand-new building, Aqua Shores, that's just gone up beside the resort. It's fairly tall, lots of residential units, requires indoor firefighting, I would assume, similar to this new unit that's proposed, as well as the new condo unit just on the other side of the boat launch on Rendell. So how is it that our fire department says now that they need training in order to accommodate this new building when we've got two recent buildings that in my mind would have the exact same requirement for firefighting capabilities? Just clarification, I don't understand how we could be so remiss with the new buildings that are already in town. Thank you.
I can't answer your question, but I can refer to Mr. Janess's letters which express those concerns because we do have the building that you referred to near the boat launch, the Aqua something, is in compliance with the bylaws, no variance. The other one, at the other end of the SPLN, that is, I think, seven stories, that is above the bylaw. So height of buildings seems to be a bit of a factor when it comes to planning how to fight a fire. And that's simply what Mr. Janess will be dealing with. I think it was clear from his letter that what he is suggesting is that he needs to be involved in the planning of the building to ensure that his men can go in and be effective there in the event of a fire. And his letters are available if you'd like to read them for yourself. Thank you for your comment. Nothing further on Zoom? Nothing further from the audience? In that case, hearing none, this public. I'm reluctant to hear from you because we're supposed to be hearing from residents and I don't want to turn this into a discussion or debate. Is there, is there something that is?
Mr. Mayor, I believe I'm allowed to speak legally three times during any public hearing as per the Local Government Act and I believe I'm allowed to clarify issues. I'm not here to debate, I'm here to clarify.
I have to sail that much slower, I didn't.
I believe that the Local Government, the Local Government Act allows me three opportunities to speak in a public hearing and I'm not here to debate. I haven't started speaking yet. I'm here to clarify issues, which I believe I'm also allowed to do.
Just a moment. So the gentleman says that he is allowed, he has had his one chance to make his presentation on behalf of the developer. He is now suggesting that he is allowed to have two more chances to speak. Does any member of staff have any guidance for me on whether or not I should allow the gentleman to speak further, having already made his presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. He is able to just clarify points. He's not, not able to debate anything, just to clarify items.
So with permission of council, if you have something that you'd like to clarify, is that in response to some of the public comments?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
It was?
Mr. Mayor, could I actually speak and then you can decide whether I'm debating or clarifying?
Well. Is council willing to hear the gentleman say more or not? I'm uncomfortable with it because I think he had a presentation and I'm not sure. The opportunity to speak three times, sir, as I understand it, is an opportunity given to the public who are speaking. I'm not, I don't see where that is extended to the developer's representative to have three opportunities at the microphone. So
Mr. Mayor, we work in literally hundreds of communities and there's three rounds required by the Local Government Act and it doesn't say that the proponent or the public is allowed to speak differently. What it says is that you have three rounds to speak to a project. I'm a member of the public. I'm allowed to speak to the, to the project three times.
Well, it's an interesting argument. We have, the primary purpose of this hearing tonight is to hear from the local people who are affected. Yourself and even Mr. Regir, who is not a resident, was given an opportunity to speak. And I'm not really comfortable with you having the same rights as the local people on that, to be honest with you. So
What, what harm could it have, sir? I'm, I would like to clarify issues to allow the council to make the best decision they're capable of making. I'm not here to argue, I'm here to provide clarification on items that have come up. I would think that that would be a benefit to your decision-making process.
Just, just a moment. So corporate officer, the gentleman wishes to say something. As I understand it, when we close the public hearing, the council is not allowed to take any further information until we then discuss it at a proper meeting. So he seems to want to speak before we close the meeting. So could you please advise me what you think I should do?
Sure, no problem. Thank you. Public hearings are, sorry. In public hearings, council has a quasi-judicial function. So in addition to the legislation, there's also the rules of natural justice and procedural fairness where the legislation does not speak to a certain procedure that should be followed. So in this case, I believe that the developer is entitled to clarify information on his development.
Okay, thank you. Very good, sir. Sorry for the delay in giving you permission to clarify. I'd ask that your comments be brief, to the point.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to point out that we're in compliance with the official community plan. And the official community plan is structured in the same way that documents such as the land servicing bylaw, subdivision control bylaw are structured. In other words, the documents that are provided to a community are the official community plan and then the documents that supply how to service those, those proposed developments within the official community plan. In other words, when you're in compliance with the official community plan, you're in compliance with infrastructure guidelines and financial guidelines. And that would be the case for the Village of Harrison Hot Springs as well. So I would continue to say that we're also zoned for a five-story building at this point. And as was clarified by another gentleman from the audience, 85% of this building is five stories. There's three, there's three projections that exceed that, but the vast majority of the building is, is in, is, is five stories, which is what we're allowed to do as per the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw allows for the five-story building and if the developer wanted to, they could propose a five-story building right now in complete compliance with the C1 zoning that exists and there would be no public hearing. We have done a tremendous job, I would say, listening to the first round and the concerns and we did react very strongly and and I think made tremendous concessions to be able to have a project that, that was well-received by the APC and recommended for approval. The FAR is a very minor 0.03 increase to what is allowed by the existing zone. There's been reference to the frogs. There was an environmental study done and there was, there was no species of risk found on the property by a qualified professional. As far as the shade is concerned, we have actually pushed the setback farther away from that gentleman's property to allow for less shade obstruction, not closer. And again, we can have a five-story building right up to that property line as per the existing zone, but we tried to work with that gentleman to, to, to be fair to him.
Excuse me. You seem to be straying into argument and persuasion in favor of the project rather than clarification.
Okay.
So please limit your comments to what you said you would do, which is clarify things.
I'll do my best, Mr. Mayor. The MOTI letter for clarity, it did say that we require permits, but as was noted, we have received permits. So clarifying that issue. One item that we have no problem with is if the barbecue stands are, are not well-received by the community, we can have more art features instead. No problem, we can work with staff on that. Oh, for clarity, the trees that are being proposed were holistically on the site. It's been inferred that, that some of the sites were in the, or some of the trees were in the park. That's not correct. All of the trees that we're referencing were specific to the site. And in speaking to the representative of the sales agent for the developer, we'd like to point out that 10% of the units are being slated for adaptable housing. It's highly unlikely that adaptable housing would go up for rent. And the idea right now is to market these for owners that would live in the residence. Can we control that? No, we cannot. But right now, we're proposing that anyone can buy and live permanently in those, including people from the community. And one final thing is, I do want to clarify something else, which is there's been talk about increasing, you know, budgets for fire departments and such like this. Community such as Harrison Hot Springs, to my understanding, has about 1,900 people in it. There's really and truly only one way to increase a municipal budget and that's through taxation. And as has been discussed, this is a building that would bring a minimum of $1 million into the coffers and that's based only on the residential, not the higher mill rate commercial parts of the building, which would bring even more taxes. A community this small requires increases to taxation in one way or another. And it's either through increases to development and buildings like this and commercial infrastructure or increase to the mill rates to the local taxpayer that exists right now. That's the only way to increase fire budgets and such like that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your clarifications.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. But in the end, if there's no other person wishes to speak, I will now call the public hearing for zoning amendment by law number 1193 is hereby closed. And in doing so, I'd like to remind the public that council is forbidden from discussing this bylaw with you via to our own later deliberations after we receive the minutes and meet again. So thank you very much for attending tonight. And please stay tuned to our village website where you may see this item come up on future council agendas. Thank you very much for your time and safely home. Good night.